This is the first Tuesday in the month with a Paca City Council meeting.
Welcome, everybody, to Tuesday, August 7, 2018. Before we start the city council meeting, we actually have a public hearing that we need to take care of. This is for placing permanent zoning classification on KT Real Estate Holdings LLC, KT standing for QuickTrip, on Conny Road QQ, and that's that old furniture store that they're talking about there. This is, I do call this meeting to order. We have all council members and the mayor and staff that are present tonight. That's our roll call. The purpose of the hearing is, notice is hereby given that a public hearing has been set for the purpose of placing a permanent zoning classification on the following annexed property. It's ordinance number 10-18, adopted on October's, I'm sorry, on August 7, 2018. And that was a temporary zoning classification of B4 strip commercial for property described below, and it just gives the legal description. You are further notified the public hearing will be held on August 7, 2018 at 6:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall 111, South Main Street, Wapaka. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested, their attorneys or agents, to be heard. So, that's the official public notice. Brennan, you want to just tell us what they're trying to do here?
Yep, thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item is in your packet. We received an annexation request from QuickTrip. They are looking to expand their diesel canopy and relocate their underground tanks in the future when we are permitted to actually join those properties together. We are still working through some of the issues with the boundaries and merging the properties together, but this is just placing the permanent zoning of B4 onto the property for a future expansion of their diesel canopies from two to four, and the relocation of their fill stations out of the driveline over to the south side of the property.
All right. Thank you, Brennan. So, at this time, we would take testimony in favor of the annexation. If you'd like to give testimony in favor, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any testimony in favor of? Seeing none, hearing none, is there any testimony in opposition? Any testimony in opposition to the annexation, or the zoning, permanent zoning request? Hearing none, I declare this meeting, or hearing closed at 6:03 PM. Let's go right into our city council meeting, then. We have, don't forget, council, that we do have two meetings yet tonight. We have the regular city council meeting, and then we're going to have a committee of the whole meeting afterwards, which is dealing with the transit system and budgeting for 2019. Keep that in mind as we go through this. I do call this city council meeting to order. It is August 7, 2018 at 6:04 PM. We'll begin, as always, with the pledge of allegiance. Please rise, face the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And we'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thanks, Sandy. And would you take roll also for us?
Ryan Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Lori Chestnut.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Proczowski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Neal.
Here.
Chuck Whitman.
Here.
Mary Fair.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks. Next is our consent agenda. These are items where we take one motion and vote on that motion, unless you would like to see an item that is on the consent agenda move to the regular agenda. Is there anybody that would like to see an item on the consent agenda moved to the regular agenda? There is no additional handout, so the agenda, the consent agenda is as you see it. We would need a motion, then, to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Peterson, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Regular agenda. Again, Sandy indicates that you received everything that you need for this meeting, so we would be looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Under non-agenda items and announcements, we have a presentation of certificate appreciation to Scott Mina for his 15 years of service to the city of Wapaka. Scott, just like the Academy Award, Scott was unable to attend tonight, so, but we'll make sure that, he works on the street department and water department, I'm sorry, public works, and make sure that Justin gets that to him, and thank him for his great service to us. And then, we also have a presentation of, to Jan Rodamacher for her 20 years of service, and she works in the library. She's not here also tonight, so Peg, you want to make sure that Jan gets that in, thank her on behalf of the city council, too? I mean, the certificate is nice, but, yeah. Thanks. Next is our public input. This is for non-agenda items. If anybody in the audience, or staff, or council members would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please, again, step up to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Any public input? All right. We are, I can't go by with it. I congratulated him already, the Wapaka Lakemen went undefeated, right, in regular season in the BABA, and they have their first playoff game this Sunday against Wyomont, and it's at Wapaka, and it starts at 2:00, 1:30. Okay? So, if you'll get there, it's a great deal. I think they raised the price of, oh.
$2.
Oh, wow, yeah, it's a, it's a heck of a baseball game for $2. I say that because Dave Peterson is the manager of the Lakemen, and we are very proud of the Lakemen and what they've done for us, or for themselves and for us, for that matter. So, thank you. Anything else for public input? Let's go on to unfinished business. We have ordinance number 1018. This is ordinance annexing territory to the city of Wapaka. This is actually the second reading, and Brennan, this has to do with the KT.
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
And we just had a public hearing discussing the zoning on that. Did you have any comments in your office?
Nope, this is just the second reading, and it actually annexed the property into the city.
Okay. So, I don't know if any council members have any discussion on that? Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this. This is the second reading.
Move to approve ordinance number 10-18.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fair, was it? I'm sorry, that we approve ordinance number 10-18. This is an ordinance annexing the territory to the city of Wapaka. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Proczowski.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
And we have, going along with that, we have ordinance number 1118. This is also the second reading.
It's our first mistake.
Oh, don't say you're a mistake.
I'm sorry. Mistake.
Please don't do that thing. All right, so this is actually the first reading. We had the public hearing ahead of time, Brennan, just for the people that are just tuning in now, you want to just explain what's happening here?
Yep. Again, during the public hearing, and when a property is annexed into the city, there's, it is annexed in as an ag property, it's a temporary zoning on the property. We have within one year to place a permanent zoning on the property. The lands within and around this area are zone B4, therefore, and the existing facilities are zone B4, therefore, we're placing B4s, the permanent zoning, on the property.
All right. So, this is the first reading, so we'll take this up at our August 21st meeting, so be aware of that, and see if you have any discussion on that. Okay, under new business, then, we have an application for a temporary Class B retailer's license for the Wapaka area fire district battle of the badges charity golf game, softball game. Golf would probably be better for you guys, but, yeah, softball game.
What's that supposed to mean?
Charity softball game on August 18, 2018. I know Henry's name's on here, Chuck, or Brian, or Andrew, you want to just explain what's going on?
I'd get a little bit. So, we were approached by Peterson Dodge, this is their idea, kind of their event for us. They will be holding just a softball game and selling, they're having like a pig roast from Nemeth, and just selling food, and just kind of getting everyone together, having a good time, hanging out. I believe their plan is to sell just sandwiches and chips, and then have some beer available, just cans of beer out of the concession stand that they'll be selling as well. And we'll go through the game, everyone will hang out, eat afterwards, and then head home. So, as far as I know, that's the plan.
Awesome.
Good luck. Safe.
Peace.
All right. Get her ready. Okay, so they, they need an application, or they need the temporary Class B license, even though we do serve beer out there, because it is a nonprofit running this event. So, we need approval from council.
Motion to approve.
Now seconded.
Yeah, motion by Hagan, second by Chestnut, that we approve of the temporary Class B retailer's license for the Wapaka area fire district battle of badges charity softball game on August 18. Time's that start, Andrew?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, Andrew, I think you're still up here, this has got to do with the Serenity Park Boardwalk project.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I just bring a memo, starting on page 98, for a capital project that was started, worked up last year, and is in the budget for this year. Budgeted for $30,000, $15,000 coming from a one-year note. The rest is actually a donation by the senior center, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. The Serenity Park, we've talked about it before, but it's the park behind the senior center, right next to the bridge, that is actually having a mural painted on it right now, if you haven't noticed that, or taken a look at that, they're making some pretty good progress there, and they have some good artists on board now to help finish that off. So, that's going to look really neat. So, that's part of this rework as well. There was a plan in place, and that plan is a little bit different than what we have here, but this plan is a little bit less expensive, and hopefully used a little bit more. Sarah and myself met with Willie Bitner from Wiscore a couple times. He was nice enough to come over all the way from La Crosse and meet with us to rework this. The old plan had more fishing piers and less usable space, and I thought it would be better served for the seniors to have more usable space and a little bit less on the fishing. It's not a great fishing area down there, but it will be access to the river to fish for those who want to do that. So, we reworked it to have, if you look at the diagram, which is the third page of the memo, you can see a rough drawing by Willie here. We added a deck in there, and then that picnic area is going to be leveled and flattened into that, and so that area is going to hopefully be used for outdoor classes, tai chi, yoga, maybe some of the cardio drumming that you saw on the parade. So, that's going to be a much more usable space than just a walkway that's going down and out to that one fishing pier, the staircases for accessibility on the other end, and they'll also be working on the picnic area a little bit. You can see the breakdown on the second page from Wiscore, where the different prices come from for that total price. We worked with Wiscore before. It's a nonprofit, and they take kids around throughout the whole summer and into fall. They teach them leadership, self-confidence. They've worked for us before, they've done a great job, they worked for Bethany. They actually stay on site and do a lot of the work over those three weeks that it's supposed to take off. Project would be slated, if passed, to be finished or done late September to early October. So, with that rework, it actually lowered the price a little bit. As I said, the senior center will be donating, or using some of their donations up to the tune of $8,150. They work very hard, they're working hard this week on their next one, which is the rummage sale tomorrow. They've done rot fries, they do multiple, multiple fundraisers each year for the sole purpose of putting it back into Serenity Park, and that's kind of their little baby or brainchild, we'll say, down there that they work on. So, they work very hard, and they're very proud of that area, and they're very proud that they get to donate to this whole cause if it gets passed, and they'll continue to put money into that park on their own as well. So, that's, that's just a little plug for their donations and the time that they spend to make that money. So, I'm recommending, based on all the rework and everything that we've done, to move forward with the Serenity Park Boardwalk at the price that was quoted from Wiscore, the $15,000 coming from the capital budget, and then the $8,150 coming from the senior center donation fund. So, tonight, I'd be requesting that the common council approves moving forward with that project for the Serenity Park Boardwalk for a price not to exceed $23,150.
Make that into a motion.
Second.
Not to exceed $23,000.
All right, we have a motion by Whitman, Chuck Whitman, and a second by Keeland, that we approve of the Serenity Park Boardwalk project for an amount not to exceed $23,150. $15,000 of that will come from our capital budget that we had agreed to, and very graciously from the senior center donation fund, the remaining amount of $8,150. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
And Scott Proczowski. Ten ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Next, we have the Evans Street Design Engineering Service. I'll turn that over to Justin.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My memo can be seen on page 103 and 104 of the packet, followed by a spreadsheet of mine on sheet 104, and then following that, a abbreviated proposal from the consultant that I'll be recommending tonight. So, Evans Street has been in the works for quite some time, as you are all aware. We're scheduling a 2019 construction of Evans Street from Churchill all the way to Berlin, or Berlin to Churchill, whichever way you look at it. We budgeted $132,000 for the design services in our capital budget, and that was anticipation for one of the state funding grants, whether it was LRIPD or TAP. So far, we know, we did not get the award for the LRIP, which is Local Road Improvement Program. We are still waiting on the TAP, which we will know by the end of the month. But at this point, I cannot wait any longer, I got to get moving on this design of Evans Street, and if we are awarded the TAP funding, we have to make a decision. Certainly, our design funds will have, or our design effort will have to increase, much like the Main Street STP program, we'll have to do a much more extensive historical review, environmental review, our specs will change, that sort of thing. So, I will be coming back if that is the case. Also, the schedule will change. If we do accept the TAP, we will not be able to construct it 2019, that's just too fast, much like Main Street, how things take time. So, there will be quite a decision to make if we are awarded that fund. And just to remind you, the TAP, Transportation Alternatives Program, would pay for 80% of alternative ways of transport, so bike or pedestrian. So, we will wait for that, and if it comes true, I will let you know. So, in front of you now, what we had, we sent out a RFP asking for design of Evans Street, based on the pre-planning that we've already done, received six proposals back from qualified firms, and we did a best value on this project because it's not a straightforward cookie cutter project. There is narrow right-of-way jockeys a bit, and we've talked many times about doing some sort of bike or ped accommodation, so we need to figure all that out, plus we have a culvert in the middle that needs some sort of work, we haven't squared that away yet. So, the best value, the main priority of the best value was, of course, was cost, also boiled down to firm qualification, engineering services, schedule, and the personnel that would be working on this design. And sheet 105 is basically a summary, breaking down how we scored that, and you can see the six firms, the lowest bid between Roger and myself, we did not feel comfortable with that firm due to their qualifications, also due to what they proposed for the services, how they would design the project, we just did not have a very good feeling. And you can see that the number of hours is significantly lower than everyone else. Well, we ended up, though, with a tie between two firms, Grammar, which is out of Grammar Associates, out of Stevens Point and Fond du Lac, and of course, SCH, who is helping us with several others, generated a number of questions, and once I felt comfortable that both firms could complete the work for us and do a fine job, it basically came down to the tiebreaker, which was the cost. So, Grammar, which is the second lowest, but scored the highest tied, is my recommendation for the night to award them the design services for Evans Street from Berlin to Churchill. One more thing I'd like to mention is, I have noted in the RFP, put quite a bit of emphasis on, very early on in the design, determining what the final cross-section will be, whether that is a sidewalk, a bike trail, a wide and shoulder, whatever that is. So, we have a couple meetings early on to determine that, and then, of course, with the ordinance, the sidewalk has an assessment to it. So, I don't have many answers right now regarding that, a number of people have asked me, but very shortly here, we're going to have those answers, and that's the reason why I need to get going on this now. And finally, if we are awarded the TAP, we can roll into that, starting the design now, we can roll into it and be just fine if we choose that route. So, just looking for the recommendation to Grammar and Associates out of Stevens Point for the Evans Street design, an amount not to exceed $40,335.
Okay, so you heard Justin's presentation, and his recommendation is to go along with Grammar and Associates out of Stevens Point for an amount not to exceed $40,335. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Hackett, second by Fair, that we approve of the agreement between the city of Wapaka and Grammar and Associates for an amount not to exceed $40,335. Discussion?
Yes, Scott.
Justin, regarding the pedestrian access, will they make one determination, this design firm, of what type of pedestrian, and then if they do, will we have a say-so on it, or how is this going to work?
Well, we had, we had that public information meeting, and we had that presentation, we showed you the four options. At that point, well, SCH was our consultant at that time, they recommended the sidewalk option, which I know is not the most popular option, but certainly, if that's what council wants, I can come back and tell you, or just send out some emails of saying this is the route we're angling towards. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, I guess if they come up with something other than a sidewalk in their design, or are they just going to design it with a sidewalk included? I guess that's kind of what my question, or is it still in flux?
Well, yeah, as I was trying to describe, it's still in a slight flux. I mean, the recommendation was to do the sidewalk, and that was to separate, basically, the pedestrians from the road traffic, was the main point of it, and also that cross-section fit within the right-of-way. So, go too wide of lanes and shoulders and a bike trail and all that, it's not all going to fit. So, that was the recommendation, but it hasn't been 100% determined, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, when you're doing this with this company, there's always the change things. How far is this going to go before things start changing in that amount?
Well, I feel very comfortable about this number. As I said, Roger and I reviewed these a couple times together, and generated several questions on to ask, and those specific things, you know, with the right-of-way shifting, issues with the culverts, what if we change our mind halfway through, those sort of things. And he was very comfortable, he is an engineer, I was talking to the project manager, was very comfortable with his effort and of getting this project done, and I think that they showed within the proposal, they definitely have the expertise of completing projects like this. They do it, Grammar is a very strong firm with doing just roadway, that's what they focus on, and they've done several local roads, county roads, state roads, TAP, LRIP, the whole nine yards. So, I feel confident that they can do it with this number.
Well, and don't forget, Lori, too, in council, that if we agree to this in our motion to not exceed that $40,335, so they would have to come back and request additional funds, and if it's a change order, they also need to get, so, we're covered.
Well, it did happen, so I just kind of, I'm always thinking about that.
Well, only with council approval it's happened. You can never exceed that amount without getting council approval. Okay, any other discussion? Sandy will take the roll.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Chuck Whitman.
Aye.
Scott Proczowski.
Aye.
And Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thanks, Justin.
Thank you.
All right. Long time coming, actually, Evans Street, so let's hope that things go there. License report number 1414, this is an operator's license, basically, it's a bartender's license. Number of names on there, these are approved pending, making sure that there's a background check, and any amounts owed to the city are paid before they actually get their license. So, we need a motion to approve license report 1414.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Keeland, that we approve license report 1414. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. We have one tax cab driver's license renewal, oh, I'm sorry, there's two names on there, and this is license report number 1415. Again, clerk's office is recommending that we approve.
Owe to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Peterson, that we approve license report 1415, taxi driver's renewal. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. All right, next, we have, under our issues, projects, discussion, a 30-minute maximum, you know, is kind of what we have planned, obviously, we can go under or over that a little bit. We're asking Justin Behrens, who's taking the head on the parking lot project that we have, the Fulton Street, Union Street parking lot project, we're asking him to give us an update. As you've all noticed, I'd probably steal a little bit of his time.
Go ahead.
They did open, they did open East Fulton Street and then the parking lot in the back, can't get all the way through, obviously, because they still need a staging area for Union Street, and we did stripe it, even though that blacktop, that stuff... And we did stripe it, even though that blacktop that's down there is just first layer of blacktop. It will be a second layer. But Jason, or Justin, has better explanations for each one of those things, so I'll let him.
Absolutely. Can I stay here instead of putting on the projector? Okay, I put it in the packet, only need the one sheet. I was planning on bringing this to council about a couple of weeks ago just to talk about the eight-hour, two-hour parking, and then it kind of ballooned into, well, let's just make it an update. So as you are aware, the old road is gone. And you know, the basic layout of the old road, we had that median dividing Jefferson from the parking lot. That is now clear and gone, and is now kind of an open parking lot area. Where is a lot of our additional stalls we're picking up is within that area. Also, on East Fulton Street, we're picking up a number of stalls along that route. East Union, which is currently just got ripped up, is pretty much the same sort of alignment, parking lot layout, or parking, excuse me, just parking stall layout as before. So as this project progresses, the, I guess, the general feel of the parking lot and these streets have changed. We've made you aware of that in the past of how it's going to be more of a parking lot feeling. It's going to slow people down, it's going to be much tighter. But the access to and through and East Fulton, Jefferson, and Union is all going to remain the same. It's going to be two-way on Jefferson Street, Fulton Street, and Union Street, just like you normally would. However, with the addition of bumpouts and a couple of islands, you know, it's going to tighten things up and slow people down. Hopefully slowing down and cutting off those people that are trying to take the bypass around the signals and maybe through the bank parking lot at, you know, at the same time. So all those things will be accomplished at the completion of this project. Stall count, when this is all said and done, by my count, we will add approximately thirty stalls. That is not counting the handicap stalls in our new plan. So we should be picking up thirty according to the plan. Of course, things change, you know, as you have to lay it out, you have to make it work on the field. But that's still, my count is that we're adding thirty. And of course, that is in preparation of Main Street. Of course, when we are constructing that, we expect it to be a mess, a ruckus. And we're going to be losing a lot of parking, absolutely during construction. After construction's over, we're not really sure. We're expecting to lose some stalls just because we're updating the road to DOT standards. Stalls should be a little bit wider spaced out, spaced further from stop signs. However, the curb's going to line up, that sort of thing. We expect to lose some out there. So this is the makeup of all that. So moving forward, we need to update our ordinance because the eight-hour parking that was on Jefferson is not, will no longer be accurately described in our ordinance, which means PD would not be able to enforce it. So in our ordinance, it describes the west edge or the west side of Jefferson Street from East Fulton and Union as being eight-hour parking. From what I understand, the history of that is that was created to allow eight-hour parking for city hall staff. It kind of evolved into additional parking for patrons downtown. Other businesses utilize it along with city hall staff. And here, we're just kind of duplicating that same element. It's eight-hour parking again for city hall staff, but also for downtown businesses, patrons, library goers, the whole nine yards. The old Jefferson layout had thirty-seven eight-hour parking stalls. With this new, what I have shaded in blue here is an additional forty-seven. And that does, again, does not count the handicap stalls. One thing that will be new out there is we're planning, and it's been proposed, to do thirty-minute parking, two stalls by each of the major banks there. Bank First and then also Chase have asked for that, just for their patrons that like to come in and out, just a quick run-in and see the teller and run back out. So that is in the works, we're planning on doing that. But again, this whole configuration re-change, how the eight-hour is going to work, the course of the thirty-minute is being presented to you tonight. So if you have questions, concerns, comments, now is the time. So I think I pretty much covered everything in about four and a half minutes.
So let's talk about the eight-hour parking and thirty-minute parking first. I know that some of you are probably going to have questions about the project itself, but let's talk about the eight-hour parking and the thirty-minute parking first. If you have any questions or comments on that, let Justin know right now. If you're not ready to tell him, then give him a call or an email. Do you have any questions on the eight-hour parking or thirty-minute parking?
Said each bank, sir.
Let me finish here. So I have a feeling that there'll be quite a few questions, so run them through me. Okay, raise your hand, and I'll call on you, and I'll let you finish your comments before we move on to the next person, all right? Laurie?
I just wonder, so each of the banks will have two stalls where people can park? And then they can just run in and out?
Well, they requested having a short timeframe. One of them said fifteen, the other one said twenty. We have thirty-minute, I can't remember exactly where it is around town, but we do have thirty-minute parking somewhere in town. Excuse me for not remembering. So that's what they requested. So to try and accommodate them in their foot traffic, the quick run-in and out, that's what we're trying to do for both of those banks. Now, we could always change it back to two-hour and tell them just to live with it. But this is just something that, you know, we're trying to work with them, trying to help them out, so.
Well, that's actually what I wanted to hear, that it was for their benefit, that they were getting some benefit out of some of this.
Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments on the thirty-minute and the eight-hour parking? Okay, any other questions about the project itself? Simple. Scott?
Could you or Brennan address some of the, I've heard comments around town, that's all I'm going to say, about business in the area being not happy? And I will comment myself after the fact to people I've talked to personally. But can you comment how you've worked with them and reassure people?
Yep, we've heard those rumors too. And we go around, and of course, I'm out there all the time, so they come grab me. Kathy from Service First or Steve from the bank. And to our knowledge, you know, going around and talking to people pretty much on a weekly basis, it ends up being, if not more frequent than that, it seems like everybody's, I would just say, okay. It's a construction project, you know, it's inconvenience. But they've come to terms that it has to be done. They're seeing progress, so they like that. They're seeing the layout now, so they're starting to come along to the whole vision of the project. So I guess I'm unaware of any of the businesses or the business owners being unhappy, I guess, with anything in specific with the project, so.
I will say, I personally talked to John from the bank one day when I was observing construction that was out there, and he said, Justin and Brennan have been accommodating, and they've had a lot of dialogue. So he's happy with the dialogue, and if things maybe need to be changed, he said, you guys might accommodate that in the future after everything is done. So I actually talked to him, and he said that to me, too.
Yep, and he's been very good to work with. And he hasn't been shy with, you know, speaking his mind to us. But we've worked with him, he's worked with us. You know, they looped their traffic through their drive-through, which is great, which helped our project progress a little quicker than what we expected. So, yeah, I mean, we're hashing things out, we're working with him, he's working with us.
Other questions, comments? Everybody? Dave?
I guess as I first look at it, I see that it's all perpendicular parking, which I guess I expected. But it does seem like that may cause a little more chance for accidents. People aren't quite so good at parking straight in perpendicular as they might be angular. I know the reason is a few more parking stalls. And I know this from talking a little bit earlier, that this is, for the public's sake, this is kind of a trial, because there is going to be another new layer of blacktop put down. And maybe there will be a chance if people don't like it, they can respond that way and make some other parking changes, or don't you see that happening? That's his first impression.
It's a possibility. Well, yeah, I mean, technically, the road is not hundred percent finished. So first of all, I probably should have said, be careful when you're walking through. There's still quite a few trip hazards out there. It's not a hundred percent complete road. There is only the first layer asphalt down. And we striped it with our crews temporarily to see how it would work, function, and operate, and get a feeling for it. So, yeah, I mean, as we go here in the next few weeks before we pave the final layer, certainly, we will accept comments and, you know, make some determinations on ourselves and go along with it. But we're encouraging, the first couple of days, I've been trying to encourage city hall staff, library staff to use it. They're a little apprehensive at first, but I told them, we need to see how this thing functions now. So we're open to comments on that.
We talked, well, go ahead, Brennan.
I guess I would just like to add to that from, you know, the design perspective a little bit as well. There's no doubt there's a significant change out there. There's no doubt that the lanes that were previously out there on East Fulton Street and Jefferson are a little bit narrower than what they were beforehand. And again, that's a combination of the angle parking. But the overall design intent, you know, is, one, this is supposed to be kind of a precursor to the downtown and the reconstruction of Main Street in 2021. And we were trying to utilize some of those aesthetic qualities and those pedestrian elements into the project design as well. So there are a little bit wider sidewalks that are being accommodated around the project as well. You know, the travel lanes are still two twelve-foot travel lanes, like what we had before. Those are standard. And, you know, and just to follow up on Justin's comments as well, it is partially temporary blacktoped out there right now. To give a look and feel, it's temporary parking. You know, when the final lift of asphalt does go on, cars will be moving closer to the curb. We've planned for that with the overhang of trucks or vehicles over the curb. But right now, can't do that because everyone's hitting that first bump or that lip of the pan, and there's still another at least foot to go. So it may seem a little bit narrower out there right now, but you still will get some additional lane width as people drive through.
You know, the idea, we talked about it yesterday, actually, about lining this area, that East Fulton Street to Jefferson Street and the parking lot. Part of that was two things. One, to make sure that there's not a free-for-all for people parking out there, parking all different directions. So we needed to put down some lines to make sure that they were parking. But also, we heard people's concerns. We thought this would be the best way to test it, put in straight-in parking, just like we planned. And we hope that that continues. But if it doesn't, we do have options, as Dave has said. We do have a second quota of blacktop that's going on. So you could change how you do park there. I mean, again, it's an option, but we're hoping that everybody becomes satisfied with what we have there, and it works just the way it is. So we'll see what happens. And I came up with three different options that we could use, but I just have not really talked about those so much to really give everybody an opportunity to try it, flow through there. So Dave, you're done? Laurie?
Okay, my biggest concern is, again, going over the center to back out of there. You're going to always have to go left or right of center. And I think we have, people with normal-sized vehicles are going to struggle. People with, like Brian spoke of it, having a truck, that is going to be a huge struggle. I just, and also fire trucks or delivery trucks, if they're there, there's no passing. You're not going to get around it. So I have this huge concern. It's been expressed to me numerous times from people and just asking about it. I think we just really need to think about that and not feel so much this is right without really, I understand we're going to try it, but there's still that concern. If it's like this, you can't back out without going over that left or right of center. There's no way to get around that straight out. And, you know, we talk about some of the disability, the people with disabilities. That will be a nightmare for them. People who have deliveries to their businesses, that will be a nightmare for all of us because it's not going to be accessible. So that being said, I just, you know, I'm glad to have alternatives and be thinking about it. But, you know, I don't know, I don't know why we're just not taking a stronger look at that and really measuring it out, having cars out there. I heard that the fire trucks can get through, but not the ladder truck. But they can come a different way. But I'm thinking in time of emergency, do we want to, you know, time is of the essence. And I know you think it's local and close, but still, you know, minutes are minutes. And ambulances, squads. It just seems very tight to protect and serve, which is our number one.
Is that a question, Laurie, or a comment? I'm trying to see if...
It's, I'm just, I just, it is a question. We need to be looking at this more strongly and looking at other people who need to use this, whether it's law enforcement, fire department, ambulance, delivery trucks. These people still have businesses. But then I can just, so a delivery truck comes and that blocks it, I can imagine what's going to be happening. You know, people are going to be so upset they can't get out. Well, they can't get out anyway without maybe, like, it just bothers me that they have to go over center. You can't go over center anywhere else on any highway or any street. You can't go over center, left or right, because that would be violation. So I look at the street, and I'm thinking, if you're backing out, and, you know, I was told about, well, you know, Pick 'n Save's got a, you know, has a parking lot, and they do it. But Pick 'n Save is a parking lot, this is a two-way street.
Get a question out of that that you'd answer, or Brennan, or Justin?
Well, the deliveries are still going to happen. We can, we're still going to allow them to happen, much the same way as they've always kind of happened. And when they've happened in the past, people have had to go around them anyways. So, and it is, it is a little tighter, so it does kind of squeak things down. So that's going to have to, I mean, deliveries, I don't know. They're just, they're going to happen, and they can happen whenever the business owners want. I mean, that's just, just the way it's going to work. So delivery trucks are going to have to find a way, you know, through or find a spot to park. But they have access to go through it.
And how much time can they be in the, in the street delivering?
I'm not aware of that ordinance, so.
Have you, Brian, have you, I mean, going along with that, I know we have a number of deliveries downtown. Had...
We haven't had any complaints at this point.
We'll know now, Laurie, whether the straight-in parking is creating complaints. They'll, people will let the police know if they're blocked. Again, that's why we're testing to make sure. Can you address, Brian, maybe, can you address the backing out, straight-in parking, going across center?
We're not supposed to cross the double yellow line. So if you cross it...
Not putting a double yellow line down. There's going to be no line in the middle of, as I understand, East Fulton or Jefferson. There will not be a double yellow line. There won't be any line whatsoever.
Then that addresses that issue. However, if somebody does back out of a parking stall and they hit a vehicle, they will be cited for unsafe backing.
Which they would, Eddie.
Correct.
So then the center line is not going to be there, so then it's not going to be an issue?
Well, it's going to be an issue, there's no doubt. You're going to have to look both ways.
Yeah, but would it be reasonable, Justin, to maybe try and look at doing a couple with the angle parking? And just to see if it's an easier back out? If it's less stressful to people?
Well, it probably would be. I don't think we even need to try that to even say that it would be better or less stressful backing out, because it's less of a turn. I mean, we found that out trying to do the back and angle. We've already been through that exercise.
Well, let me stop you right there, because the answer is, no, we can't do that right now. We already painted the line. So we got to go, what, five or six weeks with what we currently have? Then that's when you make that decision.
Yes.
And who will make that decision?
You will. You will ultimately.
And we have put, whoever's policies or whoever's, how can people say how...
Mayor, one of the things that we can do, too, is if you want us to track if there's any accidents that happen in that area, we can track that. And I can bring that in from, in... And I can bring that in from, information back.
I think that's probably very important, to find out how people handle the straight-in parking. Not only from an accident standpoint, but from a delivery standpoint, from a flow standpoint, do they still use East Fulton Street and Jefferson Street, or do they avoid it? All of those things, we probably need to just find out how that changes. And of course, we're not gonna get an actual number of flow because Union Street, Jefferson Street are still gonna flow, so you can't flow through. Farthest you can get is to the bank or into the library parking. People are still gonna avoid going down that road until it completely flows through.
So, how is this parking any different than what we deal with on a daily basis? Kmart, Walmart, you name it, parking lot, we deal with that all, all the time, don't we?
It's not.
How's that different?
Who are you asking the question?
Well, I'm asking Laurie why she has an issue, because we deal with it all the time.
Parking lots are not considered the same as streets.
I'm bringing that up. I said Walmart, Kmart, Shopko, name a parking lot, they're all that way, aren't they? Isn't this a parking lot?
No, it's a two-way street.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the design intent for a second. It's two travel lanes with parking on either side with the sidewalk. It's the same function as what we had before. However, again, no doubt, we have narrowed the road down a bit to accommodate slower traffic, to Justin's point earlier. One of the design intentions, what we heard when we did the main, the downtown Main Street project and what we were focusing on in this project, was trying to eliminate cars speeding through the area, making this more pedestrian-friendly. The design that was, has been worked on, was chosen as being constructed, meets all those guidelines. Again, there's no doubt, it is gonna be a narrow area, but that was the design intent, to slow the traffic down as you came through this area. It is still a public street, it still meets public standards, because you have the two-foot travel lanes on East Fulton Street, on Jefferson Street, with parking on either side. It still meets the criteria of a public road, but there's no doubt the design and feel is similar to what you'd be driving through in a Kmart or Walmart or that type of parking lot. If you drive through there, you're driving through there at a slower speed. That was one of the design criteria that we've looked at when we planned this out for traffic in and around the city hall and library square. Again, there's also additional benefits that we added into this. There's a new sidewalk that was placed right along the city hall, library, entering into the building, which I think was a huge benefit to the library and one of the concerns that we had with people traversing and trying to get to the public area. And we did widen the sidewalks a little bit on either side because we were, again, planning for the bumper overhang and everything else that is typically done or typically occurs for a lot of vehicles that do park in the area.
I gotta, I'm falling again. Sorry, I bounced over. Oh, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to comment that, that on this parking on East Fulton, I drive a Yukon XL, and I, that's gonna be really, really tough parking for, for a larger vehicle. So, that's my only comment. Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Very.
I, I believe that Justin and Brennan have explained some things that are going to change, like when we do the second layer of paving, this, we're gonna actually have more parking space. We also have, have had, we voted on this. We, we just, we, we had all the input from the experts, people who consulted with us and our own experts that work for us, and brought it to us, and we approved it. So, I think what our responsibility is, as public servants, is to listen to people's complaints, but then direct them to the proper people who can give them answers. Because some people who complain might not have ever thought that the street's actually gonna be, or there's gonna be an actual, another whole foot for my car to go in down the road when we put the second layer on. And so, a simple conversation with Justin or Brennan might have answered that question, and what might have been a concern would go away. So, I think that's our big responsibility, is to stand behind what we decided to do, take in people's concerns, but direct them to the right people to answer those. I, I think, I'm dead serious about that. I think we need to support what we decided to do.
Thank you. Brennan, you have a?
I just wanna make, I guess, one other comment. A typical in the parking stall is nine by eighteen. And I Googled it earlier before I came to the meeting tonight, because there's been a lot of concern about some of the longer vehicles that people drive. A typical F-150 is seventeen and a half feet long. A Yukon is just right around seventeen feet long. So, there are gonna be times, there's no doubt, that there are extended cab trucks out there, and some that have, you know, trailer hitches on it, just like in any other space. They may overhang a little bit into the travel area, you know. But again, I mean, that, we meet the design criteria for typical parking stall and everything else.
I think you pretty much answered my question. I presume, you guys can answer this, when you designed this and the parking stalls, there was some discussion, or the design firm must have known that, you know, this was still going to be an okay design regarding the parking and backing out. My guess would go on that. I mean, you guys would know better than I. They must take everything into consideration, besides this number of stalls, right?
Yeah, I mean, the design is based upon the urban standards for parking lots and roads. Correct.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you. So, I think that what you got out of it is probably, let's, let's see what happens here. We lined it. I, I still say it's a project that needed to be done. I mean, obviously, we got the water and the storm sewers done, and that was a very important part of the project. We also got the first layer of the blacktop down, at least down East Fulton Street, Jefferson Street. So, it's a good project. Let's, let's just make sure that people give it a chance and are satisfied with the end result. With that, then, we'll close out this part of the meeting. The next part is communications, recommendations of the mayor. I remember, as I told you, there is a committee of the whole meeting that's gonna follow this council meeting, which is gonna start in a few minutes. Henry, we don't have anything on the, Sandy, anything on the twenty-first beside the regular council meeting?
Regular council meeting, our next budget, likes, you're right.
Okay. Well, in the likes, remember, that's an annual meeting. That will be held at six o'clock, and we'll do council right after that. So, maybe a little longer, because we got department heads' discussion that night too, so. But otherwise, it should be, everything should be good there. Any other comments, council, for regular agenda? Need a motion to adjourn, then?
So moved.
By fair, second by hack, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is August twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen. So, to call, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried, we are adjourned at six fifty-eight P.M. Want to take a break? Want to move on?
No, let's move on.
Keep moving? All right. All right, the committee of the whole meeting basically has to do with the transit. So, we'll have, Henry, I think you're gonna set us up here, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna set us up.
Roy? Mayor, you want me to start?
Oh, it's the second page. Shut up.
Yes, Henry, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I must be.
Well, thank you. This is the second workshop of our two thousand and nineteen budget process.
Hold on a second. Okay. If you don't have anything to do with this and you don't wanna listen, please leave. If you do wanna listen, quiet down, so we can all hear what's going on. All right? I got a little bit of, I have to be able to listen to one person, so let's not have a lot of discussion going on. Thank you. And don't be rude. Henry, go ahead.
Thank you. This is our second meeting of the two thousand and nineteen budget process work session, and we're focusing on transit. I think the, the goal of this is to just try to give a kind of a high-level overview of our operations. We are gonna be in the midst of going out for proposals for a new taxi contractor. And I, sometimes I, even my, my own self, I don't sometimes appreciate some of the services and things that we have in our community. And I think we have a pretty robust public transit system. And I guess we wanted to talk about that. It's just not the city's part of it. We've got Roy Suzan, Suzanne, Sirezen of R&amp;R Transport with us, and his, maybe his wife, Melissa. Thank you for coming. We have Leah Klein with us. She works for the county HHS division, and she handles transportation. And then, of course, we've got Carl Shulke with Brown Cab. And they're all gonna kinda help me, but I guess some of this is meant to kinda inform, but we've also had some challenges over the year, the last couple of years with our budgets. And we operate under levy limits. And after all, you have to put together the two thousand and nineteen budget, and transit is a part of that. So, you know, I, I put this agenda together, and you do have it in your packet, I hope. And we're gonna try to follow it pretty closely. But I just thought I could have our transit operators come up really quick and kinda talk about what they do and sort of a little bit about the service area that they serve, as well as their hours of operation. Maybe we start, you're probably more familiar with Brown Cab and Wapaka Taxi. So, maybe we could start with Roy. Would you come on up and just talk to council a little bit about kinda how you run your operation and that kinda thing?
First of all, thank you for having me here today. R&amp;R Transport, well, I started it three years ago. I remember coming in here, it was a little over two years ago, talking to you guys about it. But when I first started it, it was a safe ride, working operation, hours of four at night till four in the morning, trying to sort of complement the taxi that we had here in town, cover a lot of the hours that they didn't. Since then, we've expanded to twenty-four hours a day, which has been fun. But we also cover pretty much the countywide. It's not just Wapaka, and we've done runs all the way to Chicago. But those are usually special, special requests. We do cover the county, though, quite regularly, centralized out of Wapaka-King area. I don't know. Other than that, I mean, I've had to raise rates a couple of times since I started because insurance purposes and also the fuel prices have not went down at all, especially in Wapaka where they've remained the same, I think, for almost, it seems like the last year, as being the highest around. But, like, I don't know. My goal for R&amp;R Transport has been to not only complement a taxi, but cover areas where they, they're, like, can't, can't go, or they're not, like, they don't go out as far as I do, but I'd like to make sure that it, it's a more comprehensive coverage area, as long as twenty-four hours a day, so people can make it to work at all times, because we have a pretty strong third shift in this area. Other than that, you guys have any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Roy, do you have a kind of a sense of how many, what percentage of your rides are sort of kinda within Wapaka area? Because you do get those calls, right, to maybe transfer somebody from here out to, say, Harbor or something?
Oh, yeah. The, I would say the percentage of my rides, I would have to say probably are right around sixty to seventy percent, localized, like, around the Wapaka-King area, and then branching out farther and farther. It gets less and less, but I'd say sixty percent at least. I mean, it's over half for sure, just the Wapaka-King. I count it sort of as the same area, although I don't know if we're talking about just Wapaka as a city. Are you talking about that?
Well, that's probably the easiest way to kinda define it. I mean, the service area of Wapaka Taxi is sort of like a finger.
Yeah, yeah, it's tough. It's a tough little thing, and I've had to deal with that too. Yeah, definitely not. Yeah, probably at least fifty percent, I'd say, then, from that area.
Well, I, I could tell you, you perform a valuable service, because my wife works at the hospital, and three o'clock, four o'clock, we get people that leave with, well, I don't know what the term is.
Ambulance?
Without doctor's orders. I wanna get the hell out of here. They need to get home, and you perform a nice service for people. Off-hours that we don't operate. So, I think it's been very complimentary, very clear.
Well, thank you very much.
Do you wanna say anything, Carl?
Yeah, let me ask one question. I, Sandy kinda brought it up to me. Roy, can you tell us what your basic rates are?
My basic rates? I just had an increase, what was it, a couple of months ago, was it? Two months ago, where it was up to seven dollars for the first person. That'll get anywhere Wapaka-King area. And then, once you go out of town, it's two dollars additional a mile. For a second passenger, it's five dollars added on to the thing. Other than that, unless they go, like, really far, and then I try to do the cheaper of the things, if it's an hourly rate to rent, like, a van or something like that for the people. If it's a group and such, it'd probably be cheaper, but.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Carl, do you wanna just outline quickly for council sort of what, what our service area is with Wapaka Taxi and sort of?
I haven't met Roy yet, but he's really correct in saying that it's complementary to what we're doing already. There's certain, we don't operate late into the wee morning hours, but Roy does. We, we have surcharges once we leave the city limit, and we won't go very far past the city limit, because we need to keep our fleet in the city for the city residents. So, what R&amp;R is able to do is just really a great thing for the community. We're very proud to, to specialize in the city. We, we are gonna do about, between fifty-four thousand and fifty-five thousand one-way trips this year. It's a very solid number. It's a, a program that, once again, is growing. We had our biggest year a couple of years ago, when the recession kinda, I think, limited how many people owned cars. And we're growing back up toward those numbers again. We're very, we're very pleased to be working at King and to be working the Veterans Home at King, and that's a challenge also. We're very happy to do it, but it's a challenge. It's many people with medical, with serious medical challenges that we need to transport carefully and with specialized equipment. Our basic rate is, is a three seventy-five for a working-age adult to go anywhere within our city limits. Three seventy-five for a working-age adult to go anywhere within the city limits. That's a subsidized rate, where our true cost for that same trip is about nine dollars, about nine dollars for that one-way trip. A lot of this is picked up by the state and the federal government mass transit aid, and that's a part of the, in the budget process. You'll also be authorizing the city to apply for the, for the grants for mass transit. Our seniors are paying two fifty for a one-way trip anywhere within the city limits. So, we're very careful to keep the rates that our senior citizens and our disabled community pay less than, as, as far discounted as we can. Any other broad questions, Henry? Mr. Mayor?
No, you did hand out a brochure. It does explain your rates and the punch card that you have, so. Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I do have a question. We actually talked about this at the staff level. Is there a movement within the taxi business to become a little bit more automated? Where you get a nice little app? Type in your app and pay right, right, right online and stuff like that, too?
So, we're, we are automating as quickly as. So we're, we are automating as quickly as we can and as much as we can. We, we do use a automated dispatch system right now in our office. We track our rides that way. We're able to, at some point in the near future, have tablets on driver dashboards. So it's a little less dependent on a two-way radio and a little more electronic signals going to the drivers. In larger cities, of course, we hear of Uber and other ways of hailing a cab or something like a cab that's smartphone dependent and, and very dependent on cellular signals. So that's all in the future, and we're moving there as quickly as we can.
And I, I understand, too, that as far as payments are concerned, too, that right now you're, people only pay with cash. Is that correct?
That's all we collect, yes.
So you don't take credit cards or debit cards?
We do not. Roy, you do take credit cards? This is another area where R and R is doing something we're not doing and it's, it's complimentary.
Is there a plan to go that way?
You know, in many cities, what we're starting to do is partner with the local business, such as a supermarket or a Walmart, where their customer service desk might sell our punch cards and accept credit cards for that sale. So they might pre-purchase it at full price from the company or from the city and then turn around and sell it at their customer service desk. That works well. What doesn't work well for us is collecting 250 transaction on a credit card. That doesn't, there's an awful lot of, of service charge that goes into that that really makes that not such a good deal to approve, to approach. But I, I would be excited to partner with the local business and to, or even City Hall and find a way to have the, the punch cards purchased through credit card or other means.
I understand. I just, we find in businesses that I work with that younger people like to use their credit. Almost exclusive. So I was just thinking of a better way to maybe generate some more revenue. Just a thought. That wasn't a question, it was a thought.
It's a good thought. I want to get there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Probably Carl, you're back up here a little bit. You know, we have these special arrangements, an operational arrangement with the Veterans Home, and I was looking back at the files yesterday and we've, we're in our 11th year already. And that's hard to believe, that we've been providing the service and it's, it's been a good relationship with them. And then we also have a kind of a special relationship with Health and Human Services. I, I don't know if, if, if council's interested in a quick response to that about how you handle that and, I don't know, Carl or? This is Leah Klein.
Pass out on our program. How we handle our operations with Waupaca Taxi currently is anytime a Waupaca city citizen calls us for a subsidized ride, anytime it's within the city limits of Waupaca or just to hear out whatever Brown Cab's service area is, we always try to refer them back through the taxi system to save our volunteer drivers for out of, outside of city limits. So really, we're not trying to compete at all whatsoever with Brown Cab. We're really trying to reserve our volunteer drivers for trips to Clintonville, trips to Madison, Milwaukee, some of those VA facilities. So anytime we get an individual, we keep referring them back to the taxi.
So can I just, I was just trying to think of a, a good question here. So what are the kind of people that would use your services? Can you explain that? I mean, like these people that are going to the grocery store or the doctor or?
Yep. Our priority is non-emergency medical transportation, but we do try to accommodate as many ride trips as possible and ride types as possible. So we might try to get a, a senior to the senior nutrition site, which is currently housed at Trinity Lutheran. We might try to get them to the senior center if they're working or if they need a ride to the grocery store. We'll try to accommodate that as well.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
The county helps Waupaca Taxi in another important way. They, they've supplied one of our vehicles until just recently. The vehicle needed to be retired. It was too old. But they've been a very good friend to Waupaca Taxi for many years. We also do many runs in the city to the nutrition program. You mentioned that, Leah, but that's a very important service for, for many of our residents and then back and forth in nutrition. We work for the King Centers, Henry pointed out. The cost of a, I mentioned the unsubsidized cost of our trip tends to be just under $9. The cost of a trip at King is higher and we do ask the King Veteran Home to pay more into the program and they do. They, they try to carry their own weight and that's kind of a moving target all the time, but we keep having meetings with them and they're very cooperative and, and try to give the program every nickel that, that they cause in expense. It's a good partnership.
Mayor, I think last October, I was, Carl shared, I think, when we were talking about the grant process, sort of who rides Waupaca Taxi. And this is through 2017. But according to the data, by far most trips are used, local seniors and other local people who have disabilities is 54%. 22% of the riders are working age adults. And the residents and guests of Veterans Home in King account for 17% of the trips. Youth account for 3%. And agency fares, that's an interesting category and that counts for about 4% of our trips. Can you explain agency fares real quick?
I'll try. So Leah works for County Health and Human Services and this doesn't affect her program. The state Health and Human Services contracts for some medical rides, in particular medical rides, with statewide agencies. And they, the state HHS gives those agencies enough money for unsubsidized transportation. So we're careful to set a rate that reflects our unsubsidized cost whenever we're doing work for family care agencies or for the statewide Medicaid broker. Those are the agencies that are getting full funding from Wisconsin HHS for providing transportation for their clients. And we don't see any reason that the local government should be subsidizing those trips. They get full, they're given a full allotment from state HHS. So we have an agency rate to, to collect the full fare. Does that answer it? Did I confuse everyone?
No, maybe. You know, there was a couple of comments I, I failed to make. I, you know, I've been here 20 years and I think, couldn't find anything in the file, but I think Waupaca Taxi's been around for at least 30 years. Because in the handouts, you can see the ordinance governing taxi cab licensing and taxi drivers licensing. And there was some amendments from an ordinance back in July of 1988. So it's at least 30 years old. So it's, it's been a pretty established service. Eva, you know? When did it start? So it's, it's been a great service to our community. You know, Carl talked to you a little bit about the number of riders, but you know, you break that out per day, that's about an average of 140 riders, trips a day. And that could be a solo one-way run or one person going back and forth. But that's, that's a lot of trips on average per day. I wanted to say something about the handouts and I probably will reference them a little bit later that you got in your packet. And the only other thing I think just as background, we are what's called a TRC system and there's 38 municipalities, including ourselves, currently within that system. So only 38 communities in the state are receiving state and federal transit subsidy for their program. Referring back to the agenda, overview of the federal and state transit funding, you know, how is the city's transit subsidy computed? And I will quickly pass out sort of our grant, our grant agreement for 2018. State. Never. Well, maybe this is straightforward. Basically, the col, the total program budget for this year is about $480,000. That includes a small administrative expense of $6,500. So what we end up doing is that's the budget. And then you got to back off all the fare revenue, the agency fares, and then a thing called package delivery, but that's kind of a misnomer because it's mainly like medical things that you're delivering. And that leaves us with a net deficit of about $274,000. And then the state, you know, goes through their gyrations, divvies up the federal transit money. The state also has transit funding. And so this year, our local share is projected to be about $5,000. Now, years ago, it was nothing. In the last couple of years, it's been more than 5,000. We currently levy $10,000 towards a transit fund. And if you remember, we did have a fare increase on January 1st. So I think that's built into this projection. And the Veterans Home is contributing to our local share as well. And they're giving us $4,000. So again, this is just based on budgets. And as you go down, you can see how the payments are dispersed. And then every year, they hold back 10% until they do our audit. Now, I will give the DOT a lot of credit. They are finally caught up. They must have brought on some more staff because it was not unusual that we would be five years before we'd get an audit done. So they were sitting on our money, holding our money all those years. They did three years of audits. Two years ago, they did one last year and they're going to do the 2017 this year and they're just starting it. So that's really great that they're turning those around in a much timelier way, timelier fashion. So it's a formula-based kind of funding. And, you know, it's a good program. It's always, you know, dependent on budgeting and what the state can work in there. And I think you've heard this before. Back in 2011, we used to get about 65% of the operating deficit, I think is the proper term. 65% of that, $274,000. This year, we're going to get about 56, 56%. And so that equates, if we were still at the 65% level, we'd probably be getting another $38, $40,000 in subsidy. So these formulas, we have been pinched by that. Now, again, why is it decreasing? Again, it's, it's a lot of its budgeting, but I think also, and Carl would know this better, maybe, seven years ago, we, we probably had five less systems in the state that they were funding. So as, you know, more communities go after this program, the pie shrinks, you know, your possibility. So that would help explain some of the, some of the lost subsidies. We talked a little bit about, okay, what does funding look like in the future? You know, I think the state in the 2019, 2018, 2019 biennium did add a little bit of money to the TRC of which we're part of. But again, that slice, because there's, you know, 38 communities, it's not going to really equate to a whole lot of extra subsidy for us. We talked about the fare schedules. Taxi fleet, in your handout, you got a listing of our vehicles. We just received another rear accessible van and we're going to bring that into service. And we're going to, some point, roll out one of those Crown Vics on that list, one of the 2010 sedans. And so I think our vehicles are generally okay, but we've got a couple vehicles that we really need to, to watch. And I think as a common practice, I always ask your permission to apply for a capital grant. And capital grants will pay 80% of the cost of the vehicle and the lift per specs. If we add any kind of accessories or whatever on it, that's at our full time. So again, it's a good program. In my time here, I don't think we've ever been turned down for a capital grant. But those vehicles, before they roll out, they have to have what, at least 150,000 miles on them? And they got to be old. So we, we, I think, eke out every, every bit of those vehicles. But the fleet could, you know, use a few, use some attention. Again, what these capital grants, you get two years to spend them. So basically, the grant that's going to pay for the van that we just delivered is the 2017 grant that we got. And we did get a 2018 capital grant. So, so we're a little bit behind on that. I don't, Roy, you've got three vehicles we've licensed with you, right? Yeah, again, that's when they're eligible, it's 150. But if you look at the inventory, we've got some over 200,000, 240, they, they, they could get some miles on them. Well, the next part of the agenda, Leah, I got you to talk a little bit about the transfer, what did you leave? Yeah, I asked her to talk about the county's five-year coordinated plan. Carl's work on their working committee or their coordinating committee. I went and attended a meeting a couple of months ago and I think it's pretty ambitious what you're doing and it's really good that you're, you're focused on that. But I thought it'd be good for you to kind of understand kind of what the county's thinking about with transit.
This was my first five-year coordinated transportation plan, so any of the technical aspects, I'm sure Carl can speak to it much more eloquently than myself. As I understand it, it's changed a little bit over the years, but the county is obligated to participate in this five-year transportation coordination plan. And we partner with the East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission and those regional planning commissions do get dollars from the state to help counties with those plans. And so we partner with them and they really take the lead on this project. They do the public notices, they do the invites and they, and they do the majority of the data collection for us. So we had a community facilitation back in April on the 24th and not a lot of turnout. It was mainly individuals that work either in the transportation system or in the helping profession with seniors and people with disabilities to really advocate on their behalf. And as I understand it, the county is not obligated to perform any of the goals. And the second stapled paper in your packet that I handed out is the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's simple explanation of what the plan is and what the requirements are. And then the. And then the second page is a front-to-back listing of the goals that that community facilitation came up with back in April. And so the individuals responsible for carrying out the plan are whoever was at the community facilitation. And that includes members of the county staff, and then also any community citizens who were in, who were present. So a lot of, the, the basic themes are more, more, and less, less. More, more availability, more hours, and less cost. We have a lot of individuals in our county that are very rural. And one of the things that is, is frustrating for myself and others who work with seniors and people with disabilities is although there are wonderful programs and services to help individuals stay in their home as long as possible, they're pretty much stranded there unless we have transportation programs like R and R, Wapaka Taxi, and then ourselves. And so we definitely are not in the business of competing with any of, either of the taxis who are represented here today. We just really want to be able to provide a subsidized ride for individuals with disabilities and individuals who are aging. So again, the county is not obligated to ensure that any of the goals in, in the packet I handed out take place. However, our Transportation Coordinating Committee, which meets every other month, does talk about them, and it, they are standing agenda items on our committee, and we do report back about the activities that specifically the county's involved in, and also other ideas that are happening across the state, so.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, every five years, at, at a minimum every five years, the DOT requires that we go out for proposals for taxi service. And this is a year we got to do it. In 2014, or I believe it was 2013 actually, we were required to go out for proposals. But I believe it was 2013, they changed the whole method about how we pay our vendors. And they went to a cost-per-hour, basically, formula. And I don't know all the gory details, but my sense is, is that the feds have kind of swooped in, really evaluated the programs the state's managing, and have basically required that they kind of change how they're doing business. Because I will tell you, the last three or four years, there seems to be something new coming every month. But anyways, we have to go out for proposal, and we will be doing that very soon. There's very strict requirements on how to do it, how you're supposed to grade the proposals. You know, you saw Justin's proposal review. This will be like on steroids, because we have to, we have a bid document that's probably that thick that vendors will get. I'm assuming Brown Cab will submit. I understand there's other services around the state that will likely propose. When we did this five years ago, we had two services. There was an outfit, I think, out of Lacrosse called Top Hat. And went ahead and approved Brown. But anyways, that process will be going forward, and you'll be hearing a little bit more about, about that in the coming months. The mayor talked about kind of trends in technology. He has a Lyft app in, in his office today. We got on there, and you could actually get from City Hall to the airport, Appleton Airport. We wondered if you might be a Lyft driver, that was you. So is it? So there is a, you know, we didn't see anybody in Uber, but we saw Lyft. Yeah? So, is it? So I think it's really great that, again, if you think back, we're one of 38 community, community, communities in this TRC. They're getting subsidies, we've got a nice complimentary service in R and R, and now we've got these web-based, you know, ride-sharing companies out that are going to likely come in. So I think it's great that we have that kind of, I guess, availability of transit for folks. I don't know if you, we threw a lot at you fairly quickly. Do you have any kind of questions on every, anything so far? And, you know, I tend to finish up. Kathy did distribute some, some information on the transit fund, I think that she wants to go through with you. But if you don't have any questions? Kathy?
Kathy? Okay. I distributed the transit fund with two years prior actuals, where our current year-to-date is, and where we're estimating the fund to be at. Based of the 2017 audit, this fund was in negative cash by $120,131. That's probably about 15 years' worth of deficit spending in this fund, which is, needs to be fixed this year. So my recommendation will be during budget time is to make a transfer from the general fund to cover this deficit, because it's already being done in our financial statements by the auditors, since we can't have any special revenue funds in negative cash.
We'll make sure that they understand too, though, that this is not an increase in tax, where...
No, it's not an increase in tax. We're taking money from the general fund, undesignated reserves, which is pretty much what we ended up last year having excess in the general fund to bail out this fund. But going through, if you look at, we're estimating, and it's stating about the same as like Henry's information that he provided on the, on the grant for the state. We get about $268,000, $215,000 annually from the state and feds. We get equipment. We only show on, in this fund the amount that we receive from the grant, its portion, and its portion of the expense of the car that we're replacing. We also have a purchase order for a subsidy through the vet's home of $32,000 a year. That's for client rides, and that, that, we can go up to about $32,000, and that's usually what we bill as the actual that we get from Brown Cab on a monthly basis and get reimbursed. Other revenues is the package delivery for the vet's home, amounts to about $85,000, or $8,500 a year. I've included the ride, fare riders, the fare for the riders that Brown Cab has collected. They normally offset it in, in, in the invoice that you approve. So you'll see on average, a net of about $26,000 a month from Brown Cab. But if you look at the invoice check register, what that is, is it's $135,000 worth of fare collected, and about 100, or $454,000 of service contracts. So the, the net is about 312 on the average for our services through Brown Cab. If we sell any equipment, taxis, this fund gets any of the proceeds from the sale. And then the transfer from the general fund is the levy that we allocate every year towards our local share. This year is, is $10,000. Delivery, and like I said, we have some miscellaneous offsets in the expenditures. The, most of it is, is the service that we contract through Brown Cab. And the delivery services are offset by the revenue that's collected and the equipment. Based on last year, the last two years, this fund was $14,000 short each year. This year, I'm hoping that with the fare increases that we did, and the expense on, on an average that we, we stay within and break even. The same thing going for 19, keeping the tax levy support at $10,000, looking at the subsidies for another taxi purchase that we should be able to break even again. But we'll have to continue to monitor this on a quarterly basis to see where we are.
Any questions on the spreadsheet, Kathy?
I guess the bottom line is, in the budget, draft budget, you're going to see there's going to be no increase in the levy or the transit fund. I, Mayor, Council, that's all, all I have. Hopefully, you, you picked up some tidbits of information about transit in Wapaka. And don't ever hesitate to reach out to me. If I don't have the answer, I can certainly get it, because there's a lot of people that know a lot more about it than I do, so.
Awesome. All right. There's nothing else for the committee of the whole, we'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Kealan, second by, or motion by Kealan, second by Hagan, that we adjourn our committee of the whole meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried, we're adjourned at 7:41 PM. And Brewers are winning.